We're on the record.
Okay, thank you very much and good evening. Now is the time for the scheduled workshop to begin. Before we go into anything more on that, I would just kind of like to know who all is on the, who here is from, on the council that's present? So, Jason, are you here?
Yes, I'm here, Steve.
Okay, and...
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, and Janet?
I'm here.
Okay, and Gail, I see you here. Patricia?
I'm here.
Okay, thank you Patricia. And I see Teresa, you are here. And Jeff Paffkey, are you with us this evening?
I am.
Okay, and council or staff members? Steve, did you have any?
No, I think, I think we know who, they're all here. I saw them.
Okay, alright, and we have a couple of presenters that we are anticipating being here. So, we have, is Rosie Sanchez on? Okay, is, from LGBT, Darcy? Aleah, Robin, are any of you on? Okay, what about, what about Kale?
Yes, I'm here, thank you.
Okay, and Manny?
I am here, thank you.
Alright, Ricardo? I think I called you already.
No.
Did not. Ricardo?
Yeah, I'm here.
Great, thank you. And Russell Roden, are you here with us?
Yes, I'm here.
Great, thank you, thank you Russell. Okay, so the purpose of the workshop this evening is continuation of justice, equality, diversity, and inclusion training. And with that, I'm going to turn the floor over to our city manager, Steve Forrester.
Thank you, Mayor. On June 23rd, the council made a motion for tonight's workshop so that we could continue our commitment to enhance our ability to serve the city of Prineville and its citizens. You probably remember that we had justice, equality, diversity, and inclusion, known as JDI training, back in January. That was to be the first of many sessions, but unfortunately, the COVID-19 pandemic has made it difficult to schedule additional trainings. Tonight will not be as much of a training as it will be an opportunity for the council and city staff to listen to perspectives and ideas on how the city can incorporate JDI to better serve the community. From a scheduling standpoint, our plan tonight is as follows. Between now and 5:30, we would like to provide the council and our presenters an outline of what the city has done regarding JDI up to this point, and also what we hope to do in the future. Also, I believe it is important that we hear from Chief Cummings regarding the Prineville Police Department's policies and procedures over the past several years, and the impact of recent legislation. So initially, I will turn the floor over to Chief Cummings. After Chief Cummings, we will hear from Kale Pearson and Manny Martinez of Crescom International. Mr. Pearson has provided the city with professional development training, and his group will continue to do so. At 5:30, our presentations will begin. We will hear from members of Prideville, the Central Oregon Black Leaders Assembly, and Russell Roden. And each presentation will be for 10 minutes, and then we will have time at the end for questions. We will also have five minutes dedicated to some local graduates from Crook County High School that wish to share some of their experiences with the council between the Prideville and the COBLO presentations. Also joining us tonight is William Marks, Community Development Regional Manager for Facebook, who may wish to give a few remarks after the presentations. I've asked city attorney Jared Reed to keep us on time tonight. And with that, Chief Cummings, would you please start us off?
Yes, thank you, city manager. Thank you, Honorable Mayor, City Council, and the members of the workshop. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk about what your police department has been doing, and was committed to continue doing, in an effort to provide quality service. My department has used a three-pronged approach to ensure we are maintaining a high standard for our community. That approach is, one, continuously updated training; two, Lexipol, which is a policy update system; and three, accreditation. And I want to quickly talk about those three things. Training is an ongoing process for all members of the department. We implemented online training so that officers could get monthly and daily training on a variety of topics to improve performance. We signed up with a national company who looks at legal updates, along with what is trending and needs to be addressed before it becomes a crisis. In the last year alone, our officers have received assigned training that included techniques on de-escalation and minimizing the use of force, cultural awareness and diversity, a second class on cultural diversity, sexual harassment, developing communication skills, anti-bias training, civil rights, crisis intervention, implicit bias, and we just completed a webinar on mandatory intervening when seeing improper force being used. It is worthy of note that much of this training had already been assigned prior to the events, and is conducted annually. The second prong is Lexipol. This is a national organization of lawyers and topic experts who review case laws and best practices, and constantly provides updates to our departments so that our employees have the most current and up-to-date policy manuals available. Each officer is then required to acknowledge they've read the new policies, and then are trained, and on a daily basis are tested on their knowledge of those policies through online-based scenario questions. The third prong is accreditation. So what is that? Much like accreditation for hospitals, colleges, and schools, police accreditation involves an outside autonomous agency or group that establishes the professional best practice standard for departments, as well as ensure the agency is following those standards by conducting a comprehensive onsite assessment. Our police department was first accredited in January of 2016, re-accredited in April of 2019, will be accredited every three years, and our dispatch center has just become accredited back in 2019. We are one of only a few cities that have both an accredited police department and dispatch center. So is its approach effective? Well, the Oregon legislators just had an emergency session to specifically work on police reform. Three of the six bills were directed at law enforcement departments and their policies. They were House Bill 4203, a ban on police chokeholds unless the officer is authorized to use deadly force. Here in Prineville, DPSST stopped providing training on chokeholds over 10 years ago. We do not train on it, and do not include it as part of our use of force. With that said, we will include the legislature's specific wording into our use of force policy. House Bill 4205 was a duty to intercede. To read you directly from our Use of Force Manual 302.21, "Duty to intercede: Any officer present and observing another officer using force that is clearly beyond that, which is objectively reasonable under the circumstances, shall intercede to prevent the use of unreasonable force. An officer who observes another employee use force that exceeds the degree of force permitted by law shall promptly report these observations to a supervisor." That was already in our policies manuals. The last bill, HB 4208, was on tear gas restrictions. We do have a policy on that, 308.6. Our policy will have to be adjusted to meet the new standards of declaring a riot. That's the legislation passed, and one of specific wordings that we will adapt immediately and put into our policy. However, it should be noted that the Prineville Police Department has not had any inventory of tear gas in our possession. Although we do have a written policy on it, we don't carry it and have never used it. Although the legislators surprisingly did not discuss it in special session, I think we should mention body cameras. Our Prineville officers have worn body cameras for the last 10 years, and have had car cameras longer than that. It is a layer of transparency that I believe is crucial, and was implemented long before others in this region. For a number of years, we have worked hard to provide training to our officers to better understand ourselves and our biases, so that we can improve our performance and service to our community. The recent police reform legislation does very little to our policies and procedures since we had already implemented those requirements prior to the legislations. Finally, I want to stress to council that the Prineville Police Department has consciously tried to establish a police staff that is more representative of our community. With only 19 officers, we have a diversified workforce that includes males, females, multiple ethnicities, bilingual, and a variety of backgrounds that further enhances our ability to service the citizens of Prineville. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. As Mr. Forrester said, next we will hear from Kale Pearson and Manny Martinez of Crescom International regarding city professional development. So with that, I'll turn it over to Kale and Manny.
Thank you. This is Kale Pearson, appreciate the opportunity to be here. And like you guys said, we were with Crescom International. It's a leadership development organization that's in 60 different countries, and we have been working with the city since 2017 to hold trainings for all of the managers and leaders across many different topics. And we're going to continue to do that once, starting back in September. We had some scheduled for May, but with COVID, we put those on hold, obviously, and continued to do these trainings quarterly as we move forward. We've hit on many topics, from innovation to talent management to emotional intelligence, you know, several different topics. And I brought Manny on board, who is a colleague of mine with Crescom International. He's going to give you a little bit of his pedigree here shortly. But I've been a business owner and manager/leader for the past 20 years, located here in Central Oregon, and also a youth coach, so heavily invested in the community and proud to partner with Crescom. And I'll let Manny introduce himself, and then we'll talk a little bit about what we're going to do going forward.
Good evening, City Council and honored guests. My name is Manny Martinez, and I live in Olympia, Washington, and I'm also representative of Crescom International. I'll give you a little background about who I am. I am a 30-year Air Force retired veteran. I was a chief master sergeant, and during that time, I served alongside people from all kinds of backgrounds, ethnicities, races, language, age groups, gender. And I saw many, many different changes throughout that 30-year career, you know, the expansion of opportunities for women in the workforce in the military, to the removal of Don't Ask, Don't Tell, and to openly having LGBTQ members serving in the military, and a lot of changes that are still going on to open up opportunities for all those who serve in the military. So I'm very proud of that. Since I left the military and I've been with Crescom, I've worked with the Lean In Tacoma Organization Chapter. I've also been involved with the Redefining You Foundation, which helps women veterans, women military, and dependent-of-families get support from whether it's work support to mental health services and things of that nature, and I've been one of their champions and advocates. So I just want to just thank you for the opportunity to bring my opportunity to help move our organization forward and move along with you as we grow into finding a more inclusive community. Thank you.
Thanks Manny. As you can see, Manny has done quite a bit, worked with a lot of different groups, speaks many different languages, and I've asked him to come help me moving forward with the trainings that we're providing because of his diverse background. He's also a really just amazing person and a great facilitator. And the next training that we are going to work on or implement in the month of September is Break Away From Bias, and really learn, you know, how our natural biases, you know, cloud our judgment, and what we can do to overcome that and create a more inclusive environment. I know we're probably short on time, so we can, we can wrap it up there, Mr. Mayor, so that you guys can move forward with the rest of the agenda. Thank you again, we really appreciate the opportunity to be here.
Well, thank you, Mr. Pearson and Mr. Martinez. And Mr. Martinez, I want to thank you for your service to our country. We certainly look forward to engaging with both of you moving forward. Please stay with us for the presentation, as I'm sure we will, we will hear some perspectives and ideas that will be valuable for us in future training. And with that, I will now turn the floor over to our attorney, Jared Reed.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm honored tonight to try to facilitate the discussions. We have a very tight schedule in regards to presenters. However, we have a very important topic to go over as well. And so I was asked to be the MC tonight, to make sure that everybody gets their appropriate time, so that we can hopefully and undoubtedly hear some great perspectives and ideas about how the city can move forward in implementing justice, equality, diversity, and inclusion within its policies and procedures. Because of our lack of time, or small amount of time, I'm going to be a little brief on the introductions. I don't mean that as an insult to anybody, but just so that you can have more time on the floor in regards to your presentation or your respective presentation. As a reminder, everyone's doing about 10 minutes. We had Ms. Sanchez, Rosie Sanchez, should be joining us between the Prideville and the COBLO presentations. She wasn't in the original agenda, so we've kind of tried to squeeze in five minutes for her, and, but everyone else, we're doing 10. And so first up is a group known as Prideville, and I want to introduce that group. I believe they're on the line. That group includes Robin Luxley, Aleah Fern, Darcy Bedorthe, and Laura Fern. Prideville is a Prineville-based group for LGBTQ+ community members, including allies and families, started in 2018 to provide a platform for connections and events to promote LGBTQ+ inclusion, visibility, and celebration of diverse individuals. Ms. Luxley is a mental health counselor that has lived in Crook County for more than a decade. Additionally, she served in the United States Army Reserved, and is a decorated veteran. Ms. Aleah Fern is a local mental health therapist, trauma-informed yoga practitioner, and member of the LGBTQ+ community in Prineville. Ms. Bedorthe is a local educator and advocate, and Ms. Laura Fern is a small business owner here in Prineville. I welcome you all, and I'm happy to turn the floor over to you.
Thank you, Jared, and City Council. We are honored to be able to kind of represent what we hope, request, expect, and want to have change here in Prineville. I'll hand over to Robin to give a brief introduction to Prideville as a group and movement.
Thank you. So we started Prideville in October of 2018 in an effort to create community and communication between our LGBTQ+ Crook County and Prineville community members. The hope was that we could align everyone that has very similar goals here in Prineville in accomplishing those, and so much more, and showing what Prineville is about, and what we appreciate in living here. As we started to grow that group, working at county mental health, we were able to host Prineville's first Pride gathering in June of 2019. And June of 2020, we had Prideville's first Pride March. Our group has grown from a number of approximately 70 members to over 150 now. We're active on Facebook and Instagram, as well as within our community, at our places of work, leisure, and other practices. We hope to be able to support not only the Prideville movement goals that you'll hear from Aleah, but also the goals of other community members, to include people of color as we go forward. We'd like to entertain all different types of questions, dialogues, conversations about what this looks like, and in hope to bring people together rather than separate.
Thank you. So we have supplied our movement goals from Prideville in public comment two meetings ago, so that's in the public record. And for those of us who are kind of convening face-to-face for the first time, I want to just update that Prideville movement goals include, and a proclamation issued from City Council stating Prineville's zero tolerance for hate and commitment to inclusivity. They upped the ante on that one two weeks ago for a, at the last City Council meeting, and offered us a resolution, which is instead of a proclamation, as a declared statement, we now have Resolution 1452 as city policy. We appreciate that collaboration, and we look forward to advancing all of the commitments embedded in that document. We also are looking for greater diversity and representation within the city of Prineville and Crook County leadership, including reducing barriers to participation. I know we had originally said, you know, what about including City Council positions to those outside city limits? I get that that might be a red line. But one of our mentors also floated the idea of bridging city and county leadership and providing opportunities for there to be some crossover positions that can bridge, bridge and help create communication across the board.
Like a city-county hybrid position?
So those are things that we would like to further talk about. We would like to see ongoing and additional training for city employees at all levels, including not only the, the police department, first responders, also city government. And I think as many times as we can open that up into public forums and have the opportunity for all people across our community to know that the leadership is engaged in these movements, and, and wanting to help advance the ideas of justice, equity, diversity, inclusion, that will really help us further by leading, leading from y'all's positions. Leading by example, thank you. We would also like to see prioritized restorative justice, restorative justice across agencies and community partners in training, policy, and practice. So restorative justice, for those who might not be familiar with it, is a concept that allows people to come forward with, with an injury that they might have sustained in community or in relationship, for people to be able to hear what that issue has meant for that individual, for people to be able to take accountability, and provide a way forward that acts more like a recommitment to justice, equity, diversity, and inclusion, as opposed to an apology of sorts. So really getting that sense of perspective across, across people, across our communities, those who might be in conflict, or just have some sort of injury maybe sustained by just systemic oppressions at large. And we think that the, the school system could be a really great way to maybe see that be implemented, and Darcy has connections to regional partners who might be able to help advance that as well. We would also like to see increased mental health supports for all community members to include mental health professionals embedded with first responders. There is a chaplain, the Oregon State Police Chaplaincy is doing a critical incident stress management and diffusing training, I think this fall. So we would like to see participation in that, as well as work with the city in terms of getting some of us as community members and mental health therapists also teamed up and ready to respond to our community and mental health crises. And along with that, we would like to see mental health treatment be more of a requirement or mandatory position as first responders, so that people can deal with the traumas that they're exposed to on the work, in the workplace. We would also like to see equal enforcement of all laws, and review or revision of antiquated or discriminatory practices. I think part of the restorative justice thread that can come in is public honoring of past injustices against minority communities, and developing ways in which we respect the history of our region, our state, and really celebrate that we, we want that equal platform moving forward. And then finally, cultural and educational events that build awareness and appreciation for Prineville's diversity. And that could include things like guest speakers, hosted at public forums, living library events at schools. We would like to see a big Prideville celebration next June. We look forward to hopefully partnering with the city to create a celebration, not just for the, the pride community or the LGBTQ+ community, but an opportunity for us as, as a city and as a wider community, just to celebrate the pride that we have and the love that we have for our town. And we would like to yield the floor for the remainder of our time to Rosie, so that she can get, get her platform as well. So Rosie, please, please take it from here. Thank you, Prideville.
Go ahead, Ms. Sanchez, unless you want me to introduce you, I certainly can.
Feel free, Jared, sure.
Okay. Sorry, thank you very much to Prideville. It was, it was very gracious of you to turn over your time. We were going to do a couple more minutes for you if you wanted it, based upon us being a little behind with the roll call and so forth. But nevertheless, Ms. Sanchez, thank you for joining us. Ms. Sanchez is a, was raised here in Prineville. She graduated from Crook County High School in 2009. As, she was in the top 10% of the class, and as well as student body president. She went on to Oregon State to get her degree in Fisheries and Wildlife Sciences, and she currently works as the Conservation Coordinator for Defenders of Wildlife in Denver, Colorado. And I believe she is here today to share. And nevertheless, I talked with Ms. Sanchez, and her family is still here, and I believe even though she's in Denver, she still classifies Prineville as home. So I wanted to make sure to get that out. She's here to share her perspectives and her experiences, and the rest of the time is yours, ma'am.
Thank you so much, Jared, and thank you for the council for having me. Prineville is still my home with a lot of familial connections there. My name is Rosie Sanchez, I go by she/her, A- pronouns, and I traditionally, I work on the traditional lands of the Cheyenne and Ute people, and I wanted to recognize that. I have been given this opportunity to speak to all of you because of Darcy and her generosity. So Darcy, thank you once again. And, and thank you to the individuals of Prideville for giving me this opportunity as well. I am here to somewhat represent the Latinx voice within the Prineville community, and to just give some perspective when it comes to our, all of our community, and the very, sorry, I'm a little nervous, and the very unique position that we are in as Prineville, that you are in as Prineville as a community. Since it is a very tight-knit community, there is a large population of Latinx people within the community that are not tapped in. If you look at the leadership within Prineville, there are no POC, people of color, on our city council, or in leadership positions. And I think that that is some, representation is something that's really important to get people involved. I also think that becoming comfortable with getting uncomfortable is something that us as a community, Prineville as a community, needs to start doing. And also bridging the gap between what is keeping the Latinx community from becoming involved within more of the community. And I think creating safe spaces and providing that opportunity to get involved in public processes is important. And what that means, I think, is creating materials, as well as programs in both languages, while also acknowledging that there are very real roadblocks that stand in the way of getting the Latinx community more involved. And that is citizenship status, as well as socioeconomic, that I think that we all need to acknowledge within Prineville. Largely, what I wanted to say is that I am proud to be from Prineville, but I know that there is a lot of work that needs to be done within the community, and particularly with acknowledging the past, I think, and where we, and getting really honest about where we want to be, go in the future. And we cannot do that without the help of the Latinx community. With 23% of the population, thank you for the statistics, Darcy and friends, with 23% of the population claiming that they are not white, that is almost a quarter, and we need to start tapping into that community and getting real about how we reach out. And I think that a lot of that has to do with representation as well. I, some short-term and long-term goals. I think what you're doing right now is wonderful, and reaching out to different members of the community, but I do think that there needs to be a more concentrated effort on the Latino community as well, considering I'm, I think that I'm the only one on this call that is from the Latino community within Prineville, and we are all interconnected, and we all talk to each other, and we would love to get involved. We just need to know that it's a safe space. And it, once again, we just, you know, I'm, I'm talking to the white allies and accomplices in the work of social justice, becoming comfortable with getting uncomfortable, and having these difficult conversations, because we've had them, and it's, we're, we're resilient, but we, we need to start having these tough conversations. And that doesn't mean that excluding people, it's just, growth is hard. And I was just watching the Prineville video, and one of the women that was featured said, in the city of Prineville, something is important, if something is important to get done, they get it done. And I think this conversation of social justice has been meaning to happen for a very long time. I'm very proud that it's happening now. I'm very proud that it's happening now. But I just, my message is basically, don't get deterred and make the conscientious effort to reach out to the Latino community because we are all connected. And when you provide a space for us, we will show up with a force and help drive the change that needs to happen within Prideville. Thank you.
Well, thank, thank you very much, Ms. Sanchez. I very much appreciate the perspective that you've provided tonight. I also want to thank Prideville for their presentation as well. All this perspective and ideas are certainly appreciated and valuable. And moving forward, I, I see Mr. Pearson and Mr. Martinez have been nodding quite a bit during presentations, so, as well as others. So thank you very much. Ms. Lexley, also thank you for your service to the country. At this point, I'd like to introduce our next presenter, which is Mr. Ricardo Waits. He's the founder of the Central Oregon Black Leaders Assembly, or COBLO. COBLO's mission is to unite all persons under the cause of equality and intends to reach this reality by uniting all ethnicities who share with that goal. Mr. Waits is a small business owner, father, and veteran of the United States Navy. And Mr. Waits, I believe you're on the phone and you're, uh, the time is yours, sir.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thanks for having me. Uh, I apologize, I don't have much time, so I'm gonna be as quick as possible here. Prideville, Oregon is a beautiful city with, uh, like most cities, it has mostly good citizens. As wonderful as the city is, there's more work to be done to make Prideville more diverse and equal. How do we do this? First, we can all be proactive and speak up when we see atrocities of inequality in Prideville and everywhere, everywhere else. That's pretty simple. That's the simple part. COBLO's goal is to begin community work in Prideville. We would like to provide counseling for children of color, special programs designed to make children of color feel more important. We have begun, begun a partnership with the HDFFA to work with them on their food truck pantry in Prideville and introduce COBLO to the community as a community helper. Of course, employment is the bread and butter. We believe COBLO's internship program is perfect for the city of Prideville. It's instrumental in providing the first steps in general generational wealth to people of color. COBLO provides 120 to 180-day paid partnership, uh, internships with local businesses. It's been working out really well in Bend, Oregon. We've placed one applicant already. We're looking to place our second at Bend Radio Group next month. So the program has been instrumental in getting people of color into positions of employment that they may not be able to reach on their own or not have the accreditation to achieve that business. So I think that our internship program is perfect for Prideville and hopefully we'll begin to get some businesses there in Prideville that want to be involved in that program. Another thing that we've been doing is we have already been speaking with the superintendent of Crook County Schools to begin reviewing curriculum as per House Bill 2023. We want to get started now because we don't want our children to wait till 2026 to see our curriculum in schools reflect the truth. We also suggest a third-party community review board to review police department complaints and use of force, including deadly force. This committee should have a real contribution and say in the review process, an outcome for anyone involved. Those are pretty much the, the quick samples that I wanted to hit on today. I'm sorry, I don't have more time to discuss these things, but I want to get to the question and, and answer period really quickly. Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
All right. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Waits, very much for the presentation. And I also appreciate you understanding that we do have a question and answer, a part of this workshop here coming up very shortly. We have one more presenter. Nevertheless, did want to thank you for what you've done as well as your service to the country. And also wanted to recognize your efforts and your organization's efforts in regards to the Warm Springs Reservation and your efforts in regards to their water crisis. That's very admirable of what you're doing there.
Appreciate that, sir.
Yep. Yeah. Our final presenter is, tonight is Russell Roden. As many of you know, Mr. Roden was the former executive director at Ochico Irrigation District. He is now, is, he now is the in-county director for Otenawa Children's Village located in Lira, Uganda. Mr. Roden is past, is a pastor at Eastside Church here in Prideville. He's provided missionary work in a variety of regions of the world, including Africa, Asia, and Central America. Mr. Roden is here to share his experiences and perspectives regarding diversity and inclusion. And Mr. Roden, thank you for being here, and the floor is yours.
Uh, thank you very much, Jared and the city council for having me. I'm really honored to be able to be a part of this. I didn't really come with any kind of list of recommendations. I'm, I think I'm more here to just share a little bit from my perspective of growing up. I mean, I was born and raised in this community, and our family has been here many generations. And, um, you know, growing up, I always wanted to be a cowboy, and I, I think the biggest thing is I, I wanted to live out as far away from anybody as I could possibly get. And I thought that was gonna be my lifestyle, but I have a different direction in my life. So while I have three granddaughters, six grandchildren, and what I call, I have three daughters in Uganda. And actually, being at Otenawa, I actually say we have over 500 children, but there's three girls in Uganda that we've been a very deep part of our life. And, um, and we would bring them here if we thought it was the best thing, but keeping them there in their culture and their environment for now seems to be the best. Just a little bit of diversity about my family. One son-in-law I have is black, so I have a black granddaughter. Uh, my son-in-law, one of my son-in-laws, uh, his dad is full Navajo, and so obviously makes my, my son-in-law half and then my, then my grandchildren. So I think, uh, diversity's been a little bit of, of just my life, how it's gone. So really, that's just, you know, a little bit of the background. Again, just grew up in this community. I've always been in it. I went through all the schools, graduated from high school there, worked at various jobs, construction, those types of things. And as Jared alluded to, I've been with the irrigation district here, or was with the irrigation district here for 28 years, where I was the manager for about eight of those years. I thought I was gonna retire here, but, you know, the Lord had different plans for my life, and I ended up, uh, my wife and I, I'd been going to Uganda since about 2013, many trips, maybe a dozen trips, and I ended up being in-country director in 2019. So in 2019, this hometown boy and his wife packed their bags and threw them on a plane and headed to Uganda. And so that's where we've been living. Unfortunately, with the COVID, you know, we were really honestly like, kind of the last plane out and the last two seats. And we wouldn't have came home other than my wife needed back surgery. But I feel like, um, if anything, and that's not an invitation for myself to join this group, but I'm just saying that I think there's those within our community, I'm not the only one, that hopefully have a diverse, uh, diverse outlook. And I think there's, there's those that are within our community that have that. Again, I started going to internationally, cross-culturally in 2003, spent five different times and trips into China. Actually thought that's where I was gonna be living. I love the culture there very much. But ended up going to Central America, Costa Rica, or Mexico, Costa Rica, Nicaragua, Panama, spent several trips there. And I really didn't think I was gonna be going into Africa, but it just turned out that I did. And honestly, if I could have my way, I'd get on every continent in the world. But we're in-country directors there, so we see a lot of diversity, the community obviously that we live in. My wife and I call it the Prideville of Uganda, believe it or not. It has a lot of similarities, a lot of farming, some timber, those types of things. And it's just like, this is the perfect place for us to be in Uganda because although there's a lot more people, it really does feel a lot like home. And so, you know, just working and being amongst that community of, of Ugandans. We love Uganda. We, you know, I honestly like when we're over there, it's, it's, you know, obviously there's a lot of blacks and there's very few whites in the community that, that we're in. But very welcoming. We've never felt, uh, never felt, you know, in a, in a challenged way, I guess, so to speak. There's challenges for living cross-culturally just because of the culture, but as far as being a part of that community, we feel very welcome there. As part of my past, I would say, is with the irrigation district, like many jobs like this with the irrigation district, you know, I've just, being manager, I've worked very broadly with, with just diverse, diverse groups, you know, environmental groups, farmers, gosh, fishermen, the political, the tribes, local, state, federal, you know, just all those types of agencies. And so, you know, just being in, in rooms many times with people that have very diverse interests and trying to work towards common goals. And I think I just commend all of you because it isn't easy. I mean, if it's easy, it would already been done. And so I think I just really commend all of you for what you're doing, how you're doing it, the city council. I know Steve Forrester personally. I've had a lot of conversations with Steve. I'm, I'm very proud that we have a city manager like Steve that is, uh, he's working hard and it's, you know, and change doesn't come easy, but I think it'll come. And so I think I was kind of just, what I really wanted to share was just the fact that I think there's other people within our community like myself. I still have things to learn. I'm not trying to indicate that I've arrived anywhere. I still have, uh, things that I can learn and to be a part of. You know, if I can just throw in a couple of things, um, you know, if you go to Asia or somewhere like that, um, you know, you hear of people groups. But if, if I go over there as a traveler, as a foreigner, so to speak, I, I really don't see people groups. I, I just see Chinese people, Asian people. But within those communities, there's people groups. If I go to Uganda, uh, so many Ugandans, but within Uganda, I recognize that there was people groups within Uganda. There's people that have different types of things. And even in Central America, those types of things. And those aren't bad, but I hope you can capture what I'm saying is like, you know, there can be even amongst our, our own, I'm just trying to say color, if you will, there's, there's people groups. And how do we work within those people groups? As manager of an irrigation district, again, there's many different people groups. And I felt like that was one of the most significant things several years ago when I came back to Prideville. And I was looking at our own community going, wow. I never re, I never looked at Prideville like this, but we have people groups within our community. We have the farmers and the ranchers perhaps, or the loggers, or those that are connected into the chamber and the business people and just different things like that. So it, it is diverse, you know, in the sense of like, when we really start reaching out, we start realizing that, you know, there's a lot of diversities and a lot of ways that we can include and make opportunity for a lot of different groups that are there. I guess what I would close with, and then I'm looking forward to the question-answer period as well, is I think one of the greatest things that we can learn is anywhere I've been in the world, anywhere I've been, children are children. Children are children, no matter where you go. They're all the same. They may not have, in a way, some things, but I think we can learn a lot because you can take these children, you could, you could put them all together and then they would be fine, quite frankly, because they, they can play together and they can do well together. And I think that's one of the beauty, beautiful things that I've seen is that, you know, if we can, if we can think like that, if we can become a little bit more like that, you know? And so I just, I, I just want to close with that, that there is, it is possible. And sometimes maybe instead of looking at it adult way, we just need to look at it the way that a child looks at it. And, and it's very inclusive, right? It's very inclusive. And so I just want to close with that. And again, thank you all very much for hearing me out. I don't know that I'm the most qualified here for sure, but I just wanted to come and just speak as a representative of this community and I'm proud of what all of you are doing.
Thank you, Mr. Roden, for your perspective tonight. Very much appreciate it. I believe with that, I, I think Mr. Forrester said that Mr. Marx may want to have a few minutes to speak, and then I want to get to questions and answers if we can. Mr. Marx, did you want to share anything tonight?
Yes, please. I'll just take a minute and on behalf of Andrew Gold, the site manager, Candace, our site coordinator, I do think it's important to have the voice of industry partners with you. So thank you so much for this opportunity. I want to recognize the efforts of everyone on this call in workshops just like this to ensure racial equality and racial justice are a priority for everyone in Crook County. At Facebook, we say diversity is everyone's responsibility. We just released our 2020 Diversity Report that outlines a lot of things we've done to increase diversity and inclusion in our own workforce. We're expanding our recruiting teams, our partnerships, our organizations, reaching out to folks like historically black colleges and universities. Because a diverse workforce is not just the right thing to do, but it also means we better serve our customers and our users. So we build products that connect the world, and that means we need a team within Facebook that reflects the different communities, backgrounds, and cultures that are out there. So we know we have a lot more to do, just like we all do. Our new hire numbers are improving, but it takes time to see those increases, and we're committing, committed to continuing that progress. We're setting a goal to spend at least a billion dollars with our diverse suppliers next year and every year thereafter. And part of that is spending $100 million annually with black-owned suppliers. That's things like facilities, construction, marketing, the whole spectrum. So achieving racial justice and equity is the goal for all of us to share, a goal that's gonna take a lot of work to achieve. This is just the start, and everyone on this call is part of that. We're gonna help in this fight. We're gonna continue to listen. We're gonna take action to support the long-term success of the black community and I diverse community. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marx. At this point, we want to open the floor. I thank all of our presenters first and foremost for being very, uh, very manageable with the time. I was actually worried that we wouldn't get to question and answer, and you, you've blown me away with that we have a good 15 minutes to do it. I am going to turn the floor over to our council as well as our staff to ask questions. I sort of remind everybody that, as Ms. Sanchez stated, uh, sort of challenge us all to understand that it's okay to be uncomfortable. And that next 10, 15 minutes could be uncomfortable, but it's part of the discussion, it's part of the growth. And as well was stated, when we have important things here in Prideville, we get it done. And so this is an important thing, as I think everybody on this call can certainly recognize and understand. So once again, thank you everyone for presenting, and I will turn the floor over to our council or staff to ask any sort of questions they wish. Okay, does any of the council members have questions or comments? Don't all speak at once.
Mayor, this is Councilman Beebe. I just, I wanted to thank everybody that was on the call today. Uh, it's, it's really awesome to get this kind of involvement. And, uh, I personally wouldn't mind having meetings with each group individually or with a few council, other council members. I think if we separated some time, we might be able to accomplish more or get into more in-depth, uh, of these discussions. Uh, just, uh, I really appreciate all the people that have talked today. And as a council member in Prideville, I'm here to help. So, uh, please reach out to me if you have any questions or, or concerns or want to talk.
Okay. Thank you, Jason. I have a question or comment, actually. Actually, I would like it to go to Rosie and, and Ricardo for that matter. One of the things that I would really like to see is means by which minority people in the community can be successful, and, and financial is, is a significant part of that. No one so far has raised the issue of financial literacy as a component of, um, education so that they can, so that as they move forward, they can know how to manage resources and move on in, in their lives. And I guess my question to each of, to either of both of you is where do you see that fit in? And Rosie, you were raised in, in Prideville, so maybe you can jump into that upfront.
Thank you so much for that question, and I will pass it to Ricardo when I'm done. Yeah, I was raised by an undocumented, single- I was raised by an undocumented single mother in Primeville who worked three jobs. And I worked my hardest to, I was president of student body. My senior year, I was one of the co captains of the soccer team. I was in jazz choir and I held one of the four state board positions for the Oregon State Board of Thespians. I had an outstanding resume so that way I could get scholarships to go to school. But I had to do that, and I did that with help from people like Darcy Bedortha and investing in different services within school. The Boys and Girls Club was also a wonderful resource for me as well. So investing in paying more attention and investing in social services that target minority and marginalized communities, I think is a really great avenue to start.
Mr. Wait, do you have a comment?
Okay, yeah, I think our internship program is one of the things that covers financial education. One of our applicants, our applicant that is placed right now is learning a business from the ground up, including banking, marketing, strategic alignment from a proven entrepreneur who's done it before. So in the future, we probably will have some classes that teach financial stability and bring in, it'd be nice to be able to bring in some financial advisors, some people of knowledge to give some of these courses, or maybe partner with CLCC and do something with them. Anything's possible if everybody's involved and wants to be a part of it, so.
This is Teresa.
Go ahead.
Yep. Anyway, this is Teresa Rumble. One of the things that I have been trying to encourage since I even thought about becoming on council is community involvement, involvement and communication. One thing that I've been working on since I have chosen not to run again for council is reaching out to some of the younger community and the diverse community and trying to get these generational, these generational gaps, diversity gaps, and those things, get those closed. So I encourage anyone, anyone of any age group, younger, older, no matter what race, background, culture, I encourage everyone to get involved in their community, whether it's sitting on a committee, whether it's running for this year's city council position that's going to be open, whether it is standing up for natural resources or anything. And I think, you know, I've reached out to the schools. We used to do a program where the schools would actually come and send students up to our city council meetings. You know, there's different things that have happened in the past that just seem to fizzle away. And I would love to see a more, you know, a more diverse by age and ethnicity and cultural background without, within our community. But we also have to, these people also have to stand up and apply for that. They have to be, they will have to be, they have to be willing to commit to those committees and things like that. And I guess I just haven't seen the interest from the younger generation or different cultural backgrounds and things like that.
And I think that it's probably because by, and I think diversity is a product of an equitable system. And we need to acknowledge the systems in place that hold diverse, diverse communities from showing up in these spaces, acknowledging the different types of oppression that these communities have faced within Primeville to get to the place that you want them to be. You can't just open the door and just say like, hey, we want you here, but this isn't a safe space. You have to create the safe space. You have to acknowledge the place, the different racial backgrounds that these people, different marginalized and minority communities have come from. It's not just you open the door and they're going to show up. You have to create the safe space. And that's, that goes along with acknowledging privilege, racial class, socioeconomic class.
And I've raised, and I've raised two, two Polynesian kids. My kids are actually half white and half Polynesian. So they are actually Hawaiian, Filipino, Chinese, and Portuguese, in addition to what I am. And so in this community, my son was born and raised in this community, and my daughter was brought here when she was a year old. So, you know, I think reaching out to the schools and working with the schools is going to be very important and getting, getting everyone into our city council meetings and getting to know us personally, whether we go out into the community and we start talking to people individually. I know, you know, myself, none of us are the three P suit type people that are hard to approach. You know, I like to think of our, our city council as approachable. You'll see me in town in my shorts and my Jeep and running around town with my music blasting. I mean, that's just me. And one of the reasons why I ran for city council is because I wanted to be just a normal human being on city council that had a voice in our community. And that's, and I've never changed that. And I would never be willing to change who I am to be someone who is an elected official. Because I got elected, I ran for the position because I wanted to be able to be me. And I want the people in our community to also have that comfort of knowing this is who I am, and I do have a voice, and I can make a change, and I want to participate. And I want to find a way to encourage them to want to participate in these committees.
Okay, this is, this is for questions of Steve Forrester. Do you have a question?
Yeah, kind of on the same lines of what Teresa, Councilperson Rumble. But, but again, we're kind of picking on Rosie and Ricardo a little bit. But if you could, and I realize that this is a very complex situation, but could you provide us just some ideas off the top of your head? How would you envision the best way for the city to start to build in a direction of creating the safe spaces that would be the foundation for, you know, our minority communities to feel welcomed into the process? So just, just off the top of your head, what were some things we could do in the next month that could start that process? I guess I'll ask Rosie first and then Ricardo.
And then maybe Prideville also.
Yeah, Prideville as well, yeah.
I will, I'll give Prideville the floor right now.
Oh, perfect.
This is Darcy Bedortha. I just want to point out that Rosie spoke to what is important to her community and to making a safe space available. And the councilwoman shut her down. So that is what is meant by you open the door and you invite people to come in, and then it doesn't feel safe. So we have a lot of work to do as white people and like not being defensive when someone says, like, I need this to feel safe before I can get involved. Because our knee jerk reaction is not providing that safe space. And thank you, Rosie, for like putting yourself out there.
And can I just elaborate a little bit on that? My name's Laura. I think, I think there's something to be said in the process of communication where when someone is offering a concept or an idea to you, you know, when you're absorbing that, you can think about, what does that mean from their perspective? What does that mean? And I appreciate, Steve Forrester, I appreciate your question asking for what does that mean? How can we do that in the next month? I don't think the change to make, you know, this a safe space for minorities is going to happen in the next month. But I appreciate like the request for how can, how can we move forward in that direction? But, but what I'm trying to get to really, really importantly, I think, is a safe space. What does that mean? And, and that doesn't mean for you to explain, you know, who you are or where you're coming from, which I think is important, and I respect that perspective. But it's not about everybody else, right? It's about the people that we're trying to make the safe space for. So for example, if our council is white, you know, just solemnly white people, it's not about their experiences. It's about how can we, as white people, really do some, some questioning and some awareness of, you know, how do we make this a safe space for other people? How can we stop what we have to say and let other people in and hear their perspectives and just sit with that perspective? Very much like what Rosie said, how can we get uncomfortable? I don't have to defend where I came from or what my experiences are, you know, what experiences I've had with other people who are non-white or LGBTQ or anything like that. I can just hear, okay, that's needed. Okay, how do we do that? Let's hear it. Let's do something about it. Let's move forward.
If I can tag in on that as well, my name's Aaliyah. One of the really important lessons that I took out of kind of a cultural, cultural perspectives class in my master's program was three questions that are really important is who am I? Who am I with you? And who are we together? So we have to continually ask ourselves, I think, what, how big is our lens and what are we willing to look at? We have to be able to examine the privileges that we have. And it's not about necessarily, equity isn't necessarily going to be a process of bringing everyone up to the level of privilege that we enjoy in our community. It's going to, it's going to require that we do the hard work of dismantling our own prejudices and our own internal biases so that we're not on, we're not on Facebook and conversation and relationship across the street declaring how unracist we are. We are all embedded with systemic racism, and it's going to require dismantling our lenses and our privilege so we can start to see the world more clearly and with more equity. When we look into the eyes of people that we share space with in our community and when we invite their voices in the conversation, we do so with open hearts and open minds and with reduced ego, perhaps, with reduced concept of what we need to attach to, to feel safe and, and a non-racism. We have to be willing to say and look at how, how we are maybe wired in a way that isn't helpful. And so that is really, if you want to start in a process in the next month, I really think that that is where we are. We have, it's not about how is the Latinx community going to embrace us and create, you know, safety for themselves within our circles. We have to do that work. And we, and by doing so, just as Rosie said, then the diversity will come as the product of the hard work that we've done. We don't start in the inclusion sector. We start with justice, right? J E D I. And I know that city council has already issued the, the resolution for city, for city of Primeville as an inclusive city. We also have work before, before we can celebrate that as the city of Primeville stands.
Thank you for that perspective. Steve, do you think you had another comment or not?
Oh, no, I, I, yeah, I was, I was looking for the first step, not that it's going to be easier. We can do it, fix it in a month. So I, but I think we all understand that.
But I really, I do really do appreciate the perspectives that have been presented, but we unfortunately are out of time. I'd like to continue this conversation later. But thank you all for the members of Prideville. I'm sorry.
Hi. Mr. Charles has been trying to speak, and I've been still watching him. So can we have just a couple of seconds where he can make a comment?
Sure. Thank you. Thank you. My name is John Charles. I'm from East Palo Alto, which is near Oakland. Facebook is just behind my mom's house. I grew up what we call 2.5 miles of terror. You know, it was the top of murders per capita. I ended up going to a high school out in Los Altos, which was 99% Caucasian, and figured out a way to make my way through that. I used football as a vehicle to get me out of that and had the luxuries of going to Portland State University, where I became a Hall of Fame quarterback and had the opportunity to go to the Atlanta Falcons in 1993. But to injury, I had to be sidelined, tried to do arena football in 1996, another injury. And from that point, I tried to figure out what to do next. And I thought working with kids would be that vehicle. And so I started working in law enforcement for about nine years, where I ended up working at McLaren Youth Corrections. And I did that for over six years in law enforcement until I sustained an injury. I reinvented myself and started my own football academy called Air One Football Academy based out of Vancouver, Washington, did that for over 10 years, and then found through doing that, I've helped a lot of people get to college. You know, I'm a pillar of the community, won the Jefferson Award for public service, student body vice president of Portland State University. I ended up moving here to Primeville. I've been here since February. I'm an internship coordinator in Redmond, and I work for ETCO, which is the Economic Development for Central Oregon. Because of COVID, we've been at home. And, you know, since then, I've still been a pillar of the community. My date, Kim Daniels, she's the director of the Chamber of Commerce. And so, you know, I have access to understanding what the community is like. And I feel that, you know, I haven't had any problems here at all. You know, I'm part of Kiwanis now. I will be joining city council, but I have to have been here as a resident for over a year. And so Casey Kaiser and a couple of other guys are helping me to facilitate that direction. Again, I'm here, I'm a pillar of the community. I'm entrenched. I believe that if me as a, as an African American, what I've found is when you go into a place where you're the minority, sometimes these, sometimes other races aren't comfortable. And so it's my job to show them a different way. Sometimes people look on television, they see BET, they see different things, and then they start to draw conclusions. And so sometimes I can knock down some of those walls, you know, by doing one brick at a time. And so I feel that if we can just continue to just love, laugh, and learn from each other, you know, those are some of the things that will help soften people's perceptions. And again, we're all, we all have prejudices. We all have things that we're not comfortable with. And so for people that choose to live in Primeville, most of these people that live here in Primeville chose to live in Primeville because they want to bell, they want to work with horses, they want to fish, they want to golf. And so, you know, there's a lot of different things that you can do. But I chose to live here and embellish myself into a community and become a part of that. And I think just knocking one brick at a time is what softens people's perceptions of me. And so please use me. I'm here.
Thank you, Mr. Charles. Just real quick before we wrap up, I just wanted to share with everybody our gratitude for sharing and just acknowledge the fact that we are well aware that this was a small meeting. It was only an hour long. We have a lot more discussions to be had. But part of this also was the opportunity to introduce everybody to everybody. And as Councilor Beebe mentioned, the opportunity for some further contact with people that isn't in sort of a more structured time limit. And I believe everyone's contact information has been shared with council, and I hope that communications continue with everybody. So again, thank you. And with that, I'll turn it over to the mayor to close it out. And wrapping it up, I just want to thank the group from Prideville. I want to thank the Black Looters Assembly. Thank you. Thank you very much. Russell Roden, Rosie Sanchez, thank you all for participating and sharing your perspectives. And we appreciate the opportunity to listen. And we look forward to continuing these important conversations and look for opportunities to serve the community better through that, through that learning. So thank you all for participating, and we look forward to meeting with you again in the future.